Okay, we'll come to order. This is the study session for September 27th. City Clerk?
Roll call. The record will show that with the exception of Council members Rozansky and Daigle, all Council members are present.
All right, great. We'll start with clarification of items on the consent agenda. Mr. Selich?
I have none.
Webb?
I have none.
Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Nichols?
Would that be as a part of the consent calendar? Are you looking at pulling those items and then having that explanation at the end of the meeting?
I'm open on that. I'm not trying to necessarily... I'm trying to... I just like to see that...
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we could take, you know, about two minutes now on each one and see if...
Well, it'd be a lot better than calling it up, as long as we don't squeeze our study session. You make the call.
I think we're fine. If I can just start backwards with 10. The police building modifications and fire station, the gender modifications are just that, they're to turn restrooms into, you know, that will adequately be for females. So what we've done is lumped a number of projects together because they're so small so that we can find a contractor who will bid and do the work.
First question I guess I had was, this is Station 6, is that the one in Newport, at Fashion Island? I'm not sure where that is.
That's at the corner of Irvine Avenue in Dover. It's commonly called the Mariners' Fire Station.
Oh, okay. And the amount that we're spending there is a very considerable amount. So my question is, is would we be better to keep that maybe one sex instead of multi-sex? I mean, for $250,000 is what we're spending on that.
The whole bid is $410,000.
Okay, so, I mean, it's...
I don't think we have the option to not have, you know, it's pretty much required by code, I think, these days that we have to be able to provide for both sexes in the fire stations because we do have female firefighters.
Let me ask you a different question then, or a different way. How many people are at that station?
Well, we have about eight people per shift at that station, but here's the issue, and that is that whenever you do any modification of restrooms, then it puts you into a new code and you have to do handicap accessible. I know the one at the Police Department is because we have a lot of females working in dispatch, and right now there isn't a female restroom for quite a distance for them to go. So we're making a male restroom into a female restroom that is close to the dispatch so that those people have one close to where they work.
But this is in a separate fire station, which is pretty small, and I think you're only talking about one truck, aren't you?
Well, I mean, if we have one female firefighter and we have two regular female firefighters, we need to make all of our stations accessible for females and give them separate quarters because they may be on any shift and they may be working overtime and they just aren't at one station. So this is really something that we need to do. As far as your other items, let me turn back to them quickly. Number nine is the Seminex Slough, and what we're trying to do here is get some, get noble consultants of Irvine to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to look at a dredging project that will simultaneously with another dredging project that the Corps of Engineers is looking at, include this in their planning because it will make it a much more cost-effective way of doing that. So we're using them as kind of the lead agency in order to make the communications with the Army Corps and see if they can be talked into including the slough as a part of their next dredging.
I'm just trying to draw you out a little bit more. Seminex Slough is the slough on the west side of town that's attached to the bottom end of the, where the oil pumps are, Beagle Banning Property surrounds it.
Yes.
And we are responsible for the channel closest to the highway, I believe, right? And the one that goes around the present properties? Is that true? Or do we, are we responsible for more than that area is what I'm... I'm trying to figure out how...
I can probably give you the quick answer. About half of it is, in fact, I'll use this map over here, and I have mine today. From about that point over to the river is under federal jurisdiction, and that's because there's a federal wetlands that's being maintained that was a mitigation project as a part of the San Ana River project, which improved the 100-year flood capacity of the river. So the federal government is responsible for this half. We are responsible for this half.
Now, these are...
And this is the half that's, we're experiencing a lot of sediment buildup, and we think that the federal government has already determined that there has to be some work done in their area, and so our thought was, well, we can piggyback onto that and save considerable amount of money in management and economies of scale.
There seem to be some indication in this that some other party than the Army Corps might ultimately end up controlling this or managing it. Is there any thought on our part that we want to be that controlling manager, or are we...
No thought whatsoever.
Okay, I'm hopeful of that, frankly. I think that that has a lot of liability. And the rest of the, I mean, from basically the top corner over to the top of the yellow corner, that's almost all slough that's not necessarily slough, but it's all waterborne islands and so forth that's basically being managed right now by the Army Corps, right? Okay, I just, I'm trying to give people an idea. So the amount that we're talking about that Newport Beach is responsible is just around the houses out to the highway essentially, or not quite to the highway, within 125 feet of the highway. Okay, thank you very much.
And if I may, Mayor, on number eight, it is, we have a professional services agreement with Hall and Foreman right now, and we're at the point to where we need to have construction documents completed. This is for the Newport Center Park behind the library, which includes additional parking spaces. So under the existing contract, there were, for some design services, but now that we seem to have a plan that everyone agrees on, to prepare the grading plans and do all of the final work so that project can be bid.
Can we get a possible picture of that plan or what the, or a description of it Homer, so that people at home have an idea? I think a lot of people felt that they were, that what happened at Jamboree and Coast Highway, that park up there and what it ends up looking like is foreign to, they never had a preview of it. And I'm trying to give at least a verbal idea of what's going on there.
Okay. I'm, just been whispered in my ear that it is on the website, but we can come back at the next study session. I don't know if you'd feel comfortable in doing this tonight, but we can come back at the next study session with a presentation of what that site plan looks like.
I think that would be best because we probably, we could put together some better materials that would be good for the folks to see.
But basically just one sentence description, that's going to be a relatively natural park with a pretty good-sized storm sewer gully in it, down the middle of it, and the outside will have some turf to build up to the height of the basic contours.
It is a passive park, but not to the extent on the library side of the drainage path, not to the extent that it would be at Jamboree and PCH. There is some seating there for the gathering spot.
Just a kind of a quick summary of the project. I guess you could kind of divide it into two pieces. The northerly portion would remain in more of a natural state. In fact, I think our plan is to ultimately enhance those native plants and that natural arroyo feature that's on that property. The southerly half of the property would be a passive park, but more of a formal-type landscaping with turf and low water, probably non-native plants and some native plants probably, if it fits together. There's, the biggest feature, I guess, of that park is the 105-space parking lot, which will also help relieve some of the pressure that we currently have at the library, so some of the employees could park on that side. And then if there were small vents in that park, they could accommodate that as well.
There was some thought early on that that slough, not the canyon, could be made into some kind of a venue that you might have a concert at or something like that. Has that been pretty well discarded?
Yes.
I'm asking that for a second reason, and that is Grand Hall Park is tied into this.
There's a small gathering area, and it's really designed for something to be associated with the library, to go over and maybe talk about books or be outside and have some kind of a small, like classroom-type event. It's not meant to be of any kind of a public venue. 105 spaces wouldn't be enough to really be adequately service any kind of a larger amphitheater type thing. So it wasn't meant for performances, it was really meant more for kind of a gathering spot and associated with the library.
So my guess then is that it would be appropriate that we think out Grand Hall Park because that venue during the summers and so forth is being used for as many as 1,000 people to accommodate up there. So is that, is that sort of what the thinking is? I hadn't, I had kind of got the impression that Grand Hall was held up until we figured out what we were doing on that.
That's certainly not my understanding. I don't think there's any relationship between the two projects in terms of timing.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, City Clerk?
Item number two, indemnification from third-party challenges to California Environment Equality Act determinations, SEQA and land use approvals.
Who's giving the staff report?
I am.
Good, Robin?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. During the review of the St. Andrews Expansion Project, one of the planning commissioners asked staff at that time whether the planning commission could include a condition of approval that would require applicants to pay for the cost of defense of any lawsuits that might have been brought to challenge that approval, either the environmental document or the project approvals themselves. And that prompted our office to look at whether such a condition could be approved, and particularly because this type of a condition has never been imposed, to my knowledge, at least since I've been here, on any project. We do have applicants when they apply for a project, they pay all the costs and they reimburse the city for the cost of preparing the, any of the studies that are required, any of the project plans, and also for the review of those plans, as well as a preparation of the environmental document. But once a project is approved, if there was a third-party challenge to either the environmental document or the project approvals in the form of, usually it's in the form of a writ to the Superior Court, then the city would bear the responsibility for any defense of that lawsuit. And so this is a proposal for the consideration of the council tonight on whether we would bring back to the council an ordinance that would authorize the city, either the planning commission or the council, in review of a project such as St. Andrews or any other type of project in the city to require such an indemnification. It would be for any costs of the litigation, any award of costs in the event of a court award and a successful challenge, and also the cost of defense costs.
What are other cities doing in this regard?
There is a, when I started looking into this, I found a couple things. One, it is a legal condition. We could adopt such an ordinance, and I think it would be held legal. And also, a very, very large number of cities actually have such an ordinance and adopt those types of conditions. I was surprised. I didn't do a survey statewide, but most of the cities that I'm aware of and have talked to all have such a condition.
Okay, Council?
Mr. Ridgeway?
The answer is yes, bring it forward. I have had to do probably five EIRs in my life. I've actually signed documents that required me to reimburse the city. It's actually almost like a contract. So the fact that we don't have it is, actually was a surprise to me, but I certainly, I don't need any more hearing on this, other than, yeah, bring it forward.
Let's have Mr. Selich.
Do we actually have to have an ordinance signed, or can it just be a policy?
We could adopt a policy. In my opinion, it would be more enforceable with an ordinance that granted that authority.
Yeah, it, at my, I mean, I'd have to sign documents, you know, in the process. So, I mean, it's a contract or an ordinance or one and the same in this case.
Mr. Nichols?
Don't we say that the EIR is supposed to be arm's length from the person that's actually submitting it? And it's supposed to be written by the city and basically they're forced to pay for it, but they do not get to determine its content or its findings or anything? My question is, is it seems pretty tough here that we're asking somebody who is paying for this thing but has no means to determine its contact or protect himself in any way to be then responsible for everything it says that the city writes and the city claims is theirs alone?
Aren't we striving for objectivity in not having a bias?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just a quick response. Mr. Nichols is personally right, but the applicant with, for whom the EIR is written at arm's length and objectively does create the project description, and therein lies his obligation. He clearly provides his project.
In addition to that, you are correct from that concept that it is the city's document, but the document, the environmental document, the main beneficiary of approval of this document is the applicant for his project, and it's a required requirement of state law to have it. In addition, this type of ordinance would not be successful if the applicant didn't have or participate in the process. In other words, the applicant provides the financing and the city does the studies, but they are the ones that are responsible to describe the project, to determine the project's parameters, the impacts of the, addressing the mitigation measures on the impacts of the project. And so they do have an opportunity throughout the process, and I think we're required to give them an opportunity to review all the city's documents beforehand and provide the information that they need to make it a complete document. So I think the applicant has just as much interest in having the environmental document be supportable and be in compliance with Environmental Quality Act.
I think your point's a good one, but my question is, is would we be, would it be appropriate that we somewhat limit their liability to their statements and/or their descriptions?
No.
Project description?
Probably, probably not from the point of view that...
Or is that done by the courts?
The city endeavors in working with the applicant, but I think it's staff's intent and the council and the planning commission's intent to have a good environmental document on all the projects that they approve. So in most cases, we feel confident, and I think the council in reviewing them feels confident about the approval of the environmental document. The problem is, is that just that there still can be a challenge to an environmental document, and it's very expensive and time-consuming, and it's in the project applicant's interest for their approvals to have that environmental document upheld. So I think both parties have an interest in making sure that the document is accurate. It's just that the city has a responsibility to make their judgment be independent from the developers. So I don't think it would be, we would not be able to piecemeal out what portions of the document that they would only be responsible to defend against.
But there's going to end up a joint liability anyway, right? Or is that...
It's not a liability issue, it's more just a responsibility for the cost of defense, and there's a very lengthy process and it can be very complicated and expensive process. And it's particularly an environmental challenge, but even a project applicant challenge on the form of a writ can get really expensive. And at this point in time, the city bears the whole cost.
Councilman Daigle?
Yes, in terms of the litigation on EIRs, I had heard that some of the challenges involve a level of review and who's deciding if we're going to do an EIR or something else.
The decision of what document to prepare is usually driven by the initial study that's done, and the city makes that determination in reviewing the project based upon the information of the initial study.
So if there's litigation concerning a level of review and we're the ones making that call, isn't there some exposure in that area?
Well, what happens is if, for instance, if the city was to go ahead and determine that a mitigated negative declaration was sufficient and the applicant wanted to do an EIR, then, you know, we could go through that process and then we wouldn't have the defense of that mitigated negative declaration. So the applicant is just as participatory in the whole process, but it's not a decision that we make independent of the outcome of the initial study and what's driving which environmental document you use.
Well, I think the question's in reverse. What if you, the city does give a negative deck, but if somebody on the outside says you should have had an EIR?
That's my point, and then the city has to defend that.
Isn't there, isn't that sort of what a lot of these challenges are about?
Very, they can often be a challenge to the decision of the city to approve a mitigated negative deck. It could be an EIR, whether the EIR was adequate. It's easier to challenge a mitigated negative deck because it's a lower standard to get you into a determination that you should do an EIR. But we've never really had that problem so much in the city on projects because I think that city staff and our environmental consultants do a good job of making sure that we take at least a conservative or at least an accurate approach to determining what's the best document to comply with the project.
And we do involve the applicants in those decisions, and there have been times when applicants have said that they would prefer that an EIR be done even if staff thinks a negative declaration would be adequate and we go ahead and prepare the EIR.
Yeah, it gets complicated very quickly because if there are issues that cannot be mitigated by a mitigated negative declaration, the city does not have the discretion to provide for overriding considerations, and that's why a project applicant many times will request an EIR, a full EIR, because he knows there may be issues that cannot be mitigated, and therefore he will ask for overriding considerations. This is a very common thing in development.
Right, and I mention that because consultants I know doing this have kind of adopted a better safe and story approach and have been. Even when people say, "You only need this," we'll go the full force on it.
Well, I, again, I don't quite understand all the discussion. This is for a benefit, and there's only one beneficiary, and it's a developer, period. And this is pretty simple to me. We need, we need an indemnification from that developer, even though we control the process. The process was written by the state, but nonetheless, a beneficiary is one and one person only. So whether it's a negative deck or a full EIR, quite candidly, I think we need this ordinance.
Anybody else? Okay, what's the direction you need from us?
I think we're looking for a direction as to whether we should bring this back at a future council meeting, you know, with a prepared ordinance or council policy.
Well, we have one, yes. And Mr. Ridgeway?
I feel that we should bring it back.
Okay.
Yes.
There's three?
Yes.
Four?
(laughing) Agony.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, we got four. You got direction enough?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks. City Clerk?
Item number three, cable TV franchise update.
We've been missing PowerPoints from Dave for a little while, so we tried to think up a subject that we could have him come back and run through a PowerPoint. We don't want him to lose his acute professionalism here.
My technical skills there. Did he use little tiny font?
I tried, yeah.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. A couple of the council members had asked for some information relating to cable TV and age-old question of where are we with our franchise agreements and with Adelphia's bankruptcy, so I wanted to go through that with you fairly briefly and allow some time for questions. So a quick history of what we'll cover here, a reminder of what cities can and cannot do, and you folks at the council know this, but not everybody at home knows it, why Newport Beach is somewhat special, what the telecom committee had been working on, and a little bit more about Adelphia's bankruptcy, and then finally, how to contact, how to find out more information. So what cities can and cannot do. In today's environment, there is very little regulation. As many folks know, the market controls the rates. Cities are no longer allowed to control cable rates with the exception of the lowest or the basic service tier, and typically cable companies don't change the rates on those tiers anymore. They change the rates on the higher tiers, which are deregulated. And Congress did that in March of 1999, saying that satellite service effectively allows folks competition to cable TV. Just a reminder that cable TV in Newport is not a government-controlled monopoly, even though many folks see it that way. Our franchise agreements are all non-exclusive, meaning anybody could come in and try and compete with Adelphia and Cox, but the barrier to entry is significant there because the cable companies own the plant and the ground. We don't own that. So all those wires, all those nodes and hubs and boxes are owned by the cable companies. So a denial of renewal and taking away that plant from them is extremely difficult, and it's rare and it's expensive. Internet service, of course, is not regulated at all by the FCC or by cities. The FCC believes that too is subject to effective competition because people can get that from wireless and DSL and dial-up, et cetera. Any questions on that screen? No. Newport Beach is special because most cities don't have two cable companies, where we do, but in Newport Beach, Cox and Adelphia are side by side. They don't directly compete, and direct competition is very rare. As I noted again, cable companies own the cable in the ground, so they don't tend to go into another company's territory and lay parallel cable. There are a few competitors out there that are called overbuilders, but it's, there's, those companies aren't doing that well fiscally and haven't come into the Southern California area. The split is roughly, Adelphia has two-thirds and Cox has a third. Here's what the map looks like. See, Adelphia's in the orange, mostly to the left, and Cox's to the right in the green. We've shown this chart to you before. This is kind of what our cable subscriber numbers are. You can see Adelphia's numbers. They have 16, almost 17,000 subscribers, Cox has 10,000. And note that there's an interesting percentage down there. That's the number of homes that, in each service area, where people could choose to take cable and either do or take a satellite. In Adelphia, more people are take, either not going with cable and going with satellite or not taking any TV at all. Cox, more people tend to take the cable service as opposed to the satellite service. And I have my suspicions as to why that is. Generally, I think it's because of service. Cox, we get a lot fewer complaints about Cox's services. You can see the franchise revenue to the city. It's about $1,200,000 each year. And again, that doesn't include internet because we can't get franchise fee revenue off of internet.
Dave, maybe you can go and, because it's almost imbued by the resonance that the city basically is a partner in this business. Can you explain how that total has arrived at? How do we get our fee? Isn't it off the base?
Yes.
Service only and nothing, none of these add-ons and none pro-football, NFL, NBA, et cetera?
Actually, it is over those things. Those are lumped in. Pay-per-view, expanded basic, special services. It's roughly 5% of your gross cable bill. If you have, if you have a cable, if you have road... If you have a cable, if you have Roadrunner service and phone, that is not, we don't take a franchise fee off of that. But anything that's cable TV related, we do take 5% of that.
So if you have 300 channels, TV channels, in your house, we get a fee from that fee that we pay, I pay Cox.
That's right.
But I don't pay for my cable service. In other words, I pay extra for that. We don't get anything for that.
From your internet service?
Yes.
Correct.
And then for the Cox phone service?
Correct.
Okay.
When you said there's no direct competition?
When you indicated that there's no direct competition, are you familiar with Verizon Communications' efforts not to be confused with Verizon Wireless to run television over their plant?
Yes, they're just starting to roll that out. I misspoke in saying there's no direct competition for an existing cable system, a traditional cable system. But you're right, Councilwoman, we are seeing phone companies getting into the video over phone lines like Verizon.
Question, Dave. It looks like from your figures that the Adelphia user pays considerably more than the Cox user. I'm just, there's much less than two to one on Adelphia to Cox. It's 1.6 to one, but it's almost two and a half to one or something like that on fees. And my question is, is that generally, so Adelphia is charging more is what I'm?
Actually, I don't know if I would come to that same conclusion. I'd have to look at it some more. So your point is that?
16,000 users of Adelphia pay two and a half times the price that 10,000 Cox do.
Where I would see that is Cox paying sometimes.
Well, I was looking at calendar year '99, not, see, 2005, it's 11.
I'd start to jump to 2004, actually, because that's the last full year and the proportion is a little bit more consistent there. I actually think the Cox people tend to have a slightly larger bill because they'll go for more of the services, but that's just anecdotal. I'd have to look at that some more.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about this sheet? Just as a reminder, your council formed a telecom committee in November of 2000 and they had a number of tasks. One was to update the code relating to cable communications. That's done. To wireless telecom, so those are wireless installations for, generally cellphone service. That's done. General use of the city right-of-way, that's done. We had to adopt a policy on the use of city facilities for wireless telecom. That's complete. The one thing that is not complete is the renewal of the franchise agreements with the existing cable providers, and I'll talk about that in a second. And then there's always an ongoing effort to educate the public about what we can and can't do relating to cable TV. And that committee is Mayor Heffernan, Councilmember Daigle, and citizens Dan Wampole and Donald Bortz. Question on this slide?
Yes, on the general use of city right-of-way, I thought that we had completed how we were going to handle installations on city-owned property, but we really hadn't gotten to any more regulation as far as like an Edison pole or something like that.
Well, we tackled installations on city facilities like the city hall and we also tackled installations for wireless providers within the public right-of-way. I'm not sure if that, I'm addressing your question, though.
Yeah, I think what we talked about was we went through all the leasing and so on. If it's a city-owned property.
We did.
But it's my understanding the code is silent if it's someone else's property, like an Edison pole, or if someone wants to come in and place their own pole.
I don't know. City Attorney Clausen, do you remember if we hit that?
I'm not sure on the question. If it's on an Edison pole, then the Edison would make the application under our current policy, on our current ordinance. So it doesn't change that. And what I think, the only thing that it's silent on at this point in time and doesn't actually allow would be, and I think it was deferred, but we have not been able to further work on it, is whether a individual company could come in and put a pole up on the city right-of-way because at this point in time, there's a provision under the ordinance that encourages undergrounding. So that was the one item, I think maybe that you're referring to, that we have not come back with.
Okay.
Good correction that we, there's a portion of that that needs to still be addressed.
Well, you have got a question. Because my name's on the bottom of that list. This is a committee that's almost five years old.
Look at all the work it's done.
Well, we haven't, when's the last time we met? Two years ago?
It's been about a year, yeah.
Well, then, even so, the issue in red.
Right.
Is that just?
I'll go cover that next because I think it's an important issue. It's kind of why we're here.
Then we'll go right ahead.
Okay. A little bit more about the ordinance and the agreements. Our franchise ordinance was first approved in 1966 and then amended. And then you updated that in May of 2004. So that franchise ordinance laid the groundwork for the negotiations on the agreement. So the ordinance and the agreement are two separate documents. And another thing that laid the groundwork for the agreement was what's called a statement of minimum goals. And I'm going to summarize that on the next screen. That statement of minimum goals tells the cable companies what we expect, our expectation list out of the franchise agreement. And just note that the franchise agreements with Adelphia and Cox both expired almost two years ago. And Bill Marticarena, who is our special counsel in these matters, in July of '04 advised that we shouldn't bother extending the franchise agreements further for a reason I'll talk about in a second.
Well, no, let's go back. When did they originally expire? Was it in 2000?
I think they expired in 2000 because we were going to get ready.
In 2000, and we gave them some little one-year extensions so they'd come to the table.
Finally, we stopped doing the one-year extensions. So they're on a kind of a holdover basis. This is a little bit more about the statement of minimum goals that your council adopted. I'm not going to go through all of them, but some of the key ones are to provide an institutional broadband network. So a network of the highest-quality fiber between government facilities and schools. Support public educational and government channels. Those are PEG channels and we asked for three of those and an allowance to grow if we were to fill those up over time. And when I say fill those up, that would be with community programming, both with the schools programming, public access programming, and government programming. Continuing on there. In addition to establishing the channels, we had asked them to assist with the development of and support for that program. So that means financial support. To provide cable connections for remote housing facilities if we have homebound seniors. To assist with the upgrade of the council chambers, either in this city hall or a new one. And to provide some live broadcasting of council meetings and other meetings which the city council deems fit, as well as the school district. So that's kind of the summary of that expectation list. Any questions on this one?
Let me ask you, has it gone so old now, is it any good?
Sure, it's still good.
Well, I view this as that somebody's been sitting, riding for free here for almost five years. This is a statement of goals. We paid a lot of money to get this. We had meetings in this room. So the fact is Cox, which wasn't in bankruptcy, versus Adelphia, has ridden for free, done none of this, but has continued to bill us, my house, collected money, and they've done nothing. So they've been sitting there kind of rent-free for five years because they've done none of this, right?
In a sense, you're right, yes.
Well, have they done any of these things?
Cox continues to provide the studio for public access programming. So anybody in Newport can go to Cox and get their public access show developed and edited and out it goes on the air. So that's the main contribution that Cox makes right now. They also do carry our council meetings, similar to what the old agreement asked them to do. That's the major contribution that Cox makes.
Which is, in total, what is that? 10% of what we would have asked them for or less?
About that when you start to look at the financial contribution that we haven't asked for.
That's good, thanks.
Dave, have they, either one of these systems upgraded to fiber optics?
I believe they're all upgraded, yes.
Both of them are?
I'm going to talk a little bit about Adelphia. Remember that Adelphia has filed for reorganization? Oh, question, council member?
On the statement of minimum goals, I remember when we had the meeting and I'm not sure there was full concurrence on how we saw community programming and the financial contribution of the cable company. Because these negotiations are exclusive, it's kind of like you have the company over the barrel and I suppose the company, in a sense, could have the city over the barrel as well. And one of the things that was discussed was to try to get a million dollars in cash from the cable company and then use this to expand the television station and have a lot of programming on water quality and other types of issues. And I'm not sure that the full committee was on board with that.
Well, I think, I don't know if we ever identified a number. What we've, the cable company's practices, Adelphia's and Cox's, are different. Cox tends to give one-time or regular cash grants. Adelphia tended to give a per subscriber amount on a monthly or quarterly basis. So we were respecting those interests and working with Cox, expecting to work with Cox, to ask for a capital grant where Adelphia, we were going to ask for ongoing support. And that would be each side's contribution.
Also to add to that, I don't recall that we ever identified any amount or ever requested or required a million dollars. And I also, this statement of minimum goals that has, that Dave summarized up here was actually brought to the council and approved.
Any more questions on this slide? I'll keep moving. Adelphia filed for reorganization in June of '02. They've been, they remain in bankruptcy, although they're coming out via an agreement with Time Warner to transfer all of Adelphia's assets, on the West Coast at least, to Time Warner. The East Coast assets of Adelphia would go to Comcast. So in May of 2005, Adelphia and Time Warner filed before the FCC for a transfer of those assets. And then the following month, Time Warner sent all of its, all the Adelphia city's letters, called Form 394s, to transfer the Adelphia asset, to transfer the Adelphia agreement, even in holdover status, to Time Warner. We had 120 days to consider that agreement, which would have been October 10th, but our special counsel got that date extended to mid-December.
Why?
Because, I'll go over that on the next slide. And actually, we had some good news on that just about an hour ago. He believed we needed some more information about this new subsidiary that Time Warner was creating to handle the California-Adelphia properties because it was a brand-new subsidiary. And your council adopted a resolution authorizing the staff to act quickly to deny a transfer if we needed to do so, but with consultation from the telecom committee. That was last.
Yeah, and I had some real concerns about that. And unfortunately, I wasn't here to address that. And my concern is when I was going over the auditor's report and I was looking at kind of the organization of our city. You know, we have the city council and then we have the city administration and above all that, we have the electric. And it seems to me that if you reject these FCC forms, you're basically rejecting a license transfer. I mean, these forms are the linchpin of their ability to transfer their business. And to me, for us to delegate that and abdicate our authority to staff, that definitely concerned me. And I think that it's the council that should retain that authority.
Well, I just have a question. It says, "But with consultation from telecom committee." Do you want that to be with veto right by the telecom committee? What does that make?
Well, let me continue on. We may have avoided the need for that, but I certainly respect Councilwoman Daigle's thoughts there. If she wants to, if you folks want to reconsider that, you're welcome to do so. These are the reasons why in the resolution we may have rejected a transfer. And I won't read them all. One of the most important ones is the failure to demonstrate the legal, technical, and financial qualifications of the Time Warner subsidiary. And that's what Mr. Marticarena did not believe at the time that Time Warner was able to do, which is why he was threatening that there could be a potential to reject this transfer. No, the transfer has not been rejected. That resolution was simply asking for the ability to reject it if we needed to before October 10th. And let me back up. I didn't have a slide on this because I just got this an hour ago. Time Warner sent all of the franchisees, included through Marticarena, a letter saying that we would, they would allow additional review until December 10th and that they noted several of Marticarena's assertions and in effect said they'll provide those documents that he requested in a timely manner. So whatever the letter that Marticarena sent on our behalf intended, it seemed to have gotten that effect. So Time Warner appears to be cooperating fully.
I've got two questions. Since he represents a bunch of cities, he's with Rutan and Tucker. Does he have a conflict representing a bunch of cities if we all have separate interests? Like, we've got a city that's been sliced in a third, two-thirds basis with Cox. How is our interest made different from Mission Viejo or wherever else he represents? I mean, can he do it? That'd be a legal question. Number two, why wouldn't we just say, "Nuts, no to the transfer"? You know, take it to the next step. I mean, in other words, I'm not saying we do that, but I'd like him to tell us. Well, why wouldn't we just now say, "Nuts, we don't like this. We don't like being held hostage for five years. Nuts to you."
Well, we certainly don't have a, besides the initial letter that went from Mr. Marticarena to Time Warner, we have no issues with Time Warner because they're not our provider right now. And we have no, I think everybody comes in with a clean slate.
Well, no, but my point is we've got a pending agreement here with a bunch of conditions that we want them to do. If we consent to the transfer, then we're going to, then we have to negotiate again. Why don't we just tell them, "These are our conditions. Here's our needs assessment. If you want to come into this town, you comply with this. And then we'll approve your transfer." Rather than approve the transfer, then start again from ground zero with a whole new cast of characters. It'll take more years and, my gosh, it'll take 10 years to get this thing done at this rate.
That's my expectation that Mr. Marticarena is proceeding down that path and working on our behalf with Time Warner. But, go ahead, Robin.
The, that was tried during the bankruptcy with Adelphia. And because they were pending, there was this pending discussion through the bankruptcy to sell off their assets and they didn't know who they were going to sell them to or who was going to buy them, then they wouldn't negotiate with the city. They wouldn't negotiate with any city.
Well, I understand. They didn't have any money. They couldn't do anything. In this case, we've got somebody who's paying something to somebody into the bankruptcy court to get these rights. Let's just talk about Newport, so.
One of the problems with this bankruptcy is that it's a proposed transfer through Time Warner, but Time Warner was proposing to create a new subsidiary of another Time Warner subsidiary to be the one to operate the cable and the cable systems in Southern California that they were buying. So there really wasn't anybody, there still isn't anybody at this point in time to negotiate with because they haven't transferred it yet.
But how long do we have to play this game till we get resolution here? Because now we get nothing for Cox for five years, now we got nothing from Adelphia and we're in no man's land again.
Not much longer is the answer. I do expect the transfer to occur shortly after December 10th or 14th of 2005 and then we actually have somebody to sit across the table from. And it's a company, again, with a clean slate from our perspective. And we have the same rights as we have today to offer, to propose our statement of minimum goals and expect them to respond to it accordingly.
Can they transfer through the authorities without our consent?
They need our consent. You're right.
Well, I guess what Mr. Heffernan, Mayor Heffernan, is saying, we're not going to consent, Dave. And you are put on notice as staff, right here and now, we're not going to consent.
Why would we not want to consent?
We need to bring this, yeah, we need to bring this back to council for consent. I guess the fact, I mean, I voice Mayor Heffernan's concern. You know, if staff consents and then we're back to square one and we have to negotiate, you know, I think I'd like to see before the next meeting maybe some modification to the authority we gave staff because I sure don't think it's right for us to have to start negotiation again.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but negotiations haven't even started. So it's not like we're going back to square one. We're at square one. We just don't have a company to negotiate with. If your point is that we should withhold our transfer until Time Warner meets our demands, we should pursue that with Mr. Marticarena. I'd be happy to have him to bring that to council as a discussion item for you. I think that's, or maybe to telecom first and then to council. It's a reasonable request.
Okay. I think that'd be terrific because, again, John's right, we're spinning wheels here.
But if we don't approve the tran-
But if we don't approve the transfer, what does that mean? They pull the plug on all of the people that are being provided services?
No, they have to, they come to the table and say, what's it going to take to get your consent? Like a normal business environment. And you don't sit around here twiddling your thumbs, because they are collecting money, Cox has collected money, Adelphia didn't stop billing our residents, and they have done nothing to comply with this needs assessment. And that's, yeah, they're riding for free, almost for five years. If you amortize what they would have paid to extend their cable franchise, they've paid nothing. You know, and we have, and we've got none of those particular benefits that other cities have gotten. If we had one cable franchise business, Cox would have had to negotiate with us, we would have had a studio or something else, a million dollars of benefit potentially on our side, and we've got nothing at that point. Adelphia is the one that's caused this problem, because they're the ones who went into bankruptcy, and that's why we couldn't negotiate.
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to make sure we're at the crossroads and we don't let go of some leverage we have. Yes, Councilman Diggle?
I think, you know, I certainly support that the authority rests with the city council in terms of okaying the transfer and not okaying the transfer, which part of that is through what may seem to be these hopelessly bureaucratic federal forms, but they're really not. They're very necessary towards the transfer. But I think to provide some context, it seems to me that Time Warner is new on the scene and that no one in Southern California has done a deal with the new Time Warner. So while I appreciate the frustrations that we all have, a lot of it was because we're dealing with a bankrupt Adelphia, and now there's a company that's come in to take over. And the reason that Cox has not negotiated is Adelphia, you know, there was no deal there. So I think a lot of this pent-up frustration is, can really be behind us in that we can look to deal with Time Warner. Is that correct, Dave?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't Time Warner do business in California?
They do somewhat, but as the councilwoman's pointing out and as Robin pointed out, this will be a new subsidiary that will take over there.
Well, I know, but they do do business.
Right.
I think they're in Huntington Beach.
They're in Costa Mesa, too, I believe.
Well, that's my point. They do do business. Now, we're getting some subsidiary rather than the big company. They do do business, they know the rules of the game.
Sure they do.
And we're just extending along further without getting any closure to this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Ridgeway.
I just want to make a slight apology to my counsel while I said I want counsel to consent. I mean, you know, I was making a demand that would have to come to council for approval, I guess. I mean, I know you understood that, but I think you're seeing the frustration up here.
And quite frankly, I don't think, we need to filter this through telecom. I think, Mr. Marticarena, whatever you want to bring back can come right to here. These are the decision-makers, maybe we can, because, you know, this is more than a little frustrating. And it seems like it's timely to address, because this is on the top of a stack in a bankruptcy setting, too.
It is.
I think it sounds like it would be very helpful to have staff come back to you with a regular agenda item with a presentation for a little bit more detail on this transfer process and what the basis that the city has the authority to deny this transfer.
All right, and I'd like you also to address that potential conflict issue, since we are a very unique city with a split, where we have two franchise companies operating within our city limits.
I don't believe that there's a conflict, and in fact, there is, economies of scale because of the multiple representation Mr. Marticarena provides us with, kind of shared fee basis for the work that he does on behalf of all the others. Not only that, but a lot of the other cities that he represents that have Adelphia, that was in bankruptcy, and he's representing with regards to this transfer of license, they aren't in a negotiating for a new, they're not all necessarily negotiating for a new cable franchise.
No, listen, all I'm saying, I'm not saying there's a traditional conflict. I want to make sure that the guy who represents us, or gal, or law firm, we're not getting less from Cox because we're dealing with Marticarena, who's dealing with Adelphia and all these other areas. Just that's the case. Are we getting what we could by having the right legal firm represent? If there's no issue, there's no issue. That's fine. We just have a very peculiar situation that might warrant, look, if you're the legal officer of the city, if you say no, it's no.
That's a different issue. It's not necessarily an issue of conflict from the point of view of whether there's a legal conflict in his representation, but you're asking whether we have somebody that may, we might be better served by looking for somebody that might have only our interests at heart and be looking at that from that point of view.
Listen, he's got an answer for this, we'll start there.
And I'd be happy to look into that.
Mr. Nichols?
My, we've never had a fixed agreement with them, to my knowledge, though, did we?
With whom?
With either Adelphia or Cox.
Oh, no.
I mean, we've been in an argument stage since, I mean, two years ago, I was on the committee, and we were still arguing then.
Well, we have the current agreements in holdover. Those are existing legitimate agreements.
But were they, I mean, Adelphia is furnishing us services, and the mayor's comment is absolutely right. I don't think we're getting anything from Cox in that, but we were asking for that from both. Is this, I mean, I didn't understand whether we signed it or not, what difference it made, because we're getting something from one, we're getting nothing from the other, and was this agreement going to change that in any way?
Yes, because you adopted the statement of minimum goals the way you did, the next cable agreements will be significantly more expansive, broader services to the community, especially with result, especially as it relates to PEG channels, than the current agreements, which hardly address PEG at all. So the mayor is correct in saying there's been a period of time during which the cable companies could have been providing us more services under these agreements, but they weren't because we didn't hammer out the new agreements. But Cox has been providing the service, the public access studio. It's limited, but it is a service that they provide to our community.
But there's, their service is being provided 40 miles away.
That's correct.
And Adelphia is doing it much more local and been providing the bulk of the services, is my understanding.
And I think that's a fair characterization, and the new agreements, I would hope, would be more equitable between the companies as to their contribution to PEG and other services.
And that's what we're trying to achieve.
That's our goal.
And why we did not sign the agreements, because we weren't getting that service? Is that, am I-
You're right. Well, it's why we proposed new negotiating terms through that statement of minimum goals.
But it's also the reason that we didn't sign the ones that are right now currently in front of us. We turned those down by council policy, very shortly didn't we?
Well, you're referring to the proposed transfer from Adelphia to Time Warner. We have not rejected that transfer. So we haven't taken any action on Time Warner's request to transfer Adelphia's franchise agreement, the old one, to Time Warner.
But they asked us to take-
They asked us to approve it, we haven't done anything with it.
And we said no at that point.
No, we didn't say no. We haven't done anything yet.
Okay, I didn't understand. But so you're saying these are two different-
Two different concepts, certainly. New agreements that we want to negotiate with as soon as Time Warner takes over, and then there's the question of when, if at all, do we authorize Time Warner to take over?
The thing that I've been misunderstanding is that whether we sign this agreement or not, we don't get any more service. I mean, we can say anything in the sky blue, but nothing changes.
Well, that's what the mayor and Mr. Ridgeway are talking about, that maybe we should withhold the approval of the transfer and exact terms that would meet what we want in the final agreement that's hammered out.
My only question is, is our withholding terms seems to have no effect on anything. But I'm only making that statement as somebody that's-
Well, we haven't even sat across the table from anyone yet, so-
Yeah, that's what I mean.
We're still at square one.
I had a question that might lead to a less passionate discussion. During these negotiations, is there any opportunity to eliminate the split geography that we're plagued with?
I think that would be our preference as a, from the city staff's perspective, but we could certainly encourage the cable companies to do that, but it would be entirely up to them.
Actually, I know during the process of when Adel, we were looking at when Adelphia was going to start selling off their assets. We were hoping, and I think even Cox was looking at the possibility of buying off those assets, but instead, through the bankruptcy process, they sold them off in bulk by region. So there wasn't an opportunity for Cox to just buy the cities to complete, which would have, obviously, we would have preferred it, I think. But that was a problem. The other thing that I think maybe we need to have Mr. Marty Carina address for the council so that they understand is what the city's options are, of forcing Cox to go ahead and negotiate with us instead of waiting for Adelphia.
Right. It seems with Adelphia, we have some leverage to those forms, but what's the leverage with Cox?
Well, we don't have any leverage with Cox, except for the fact that, as I recall during our initial discussions with both Cox and Adelphia, back before, right before they went into bankruptcy, which kind of put a halt to things, that there was a general agreement, particularly an interest by Cox, that they not sign up for something and not have kind of some parity in trying to treat both entities in the city equally with regards to what the actual agreement looked like. And so that was our difficulty. So if we get some direction from the council that we don't want to cooperate or work with Cox and try and negotiate with them both at the same time, and try and have, because what helps in that process is that you have a coordination of the city's facilities, the city broadcasting, the PEG programs, so that both entities are working kind of cooperatively, at least in that sense, so that there's at least an appearance of seamless provisions of services for the city. And that was one of the discussions, I know, that came up earlier on, that that would be beneficial to both parties to negotiate them together, so that we can cooperate in that respect. But, you know, it may be that the council may want to tell our representative for the negotiations to go forward and get Cox to sign up now instead of waiting for Adelphia transfer to Time Warner to be completed and start talking with them. We can get more information from you directly from Mr. Marty Carina on the timing of that and how that might work.
Well, I mean, are we going to agendize this and have him write Mr. Kiff's footprint?
Seems to be the council's desire, yes.
Isn't that the idea?
Yep.
Is that all right, Homer? We've got nothing to do in October, but I was just wondering where you might, is this a county or item?
I personally think it would be a better study session discussion, you know, and dedicate the whole hour and a half or two hours to this discussion.
Let's hope it doesn't take two hours. But I mean, but we want the decision, we want the guy with the answers.
We will.
No offense, Mr. Kiff, but this is a very technical legal arena. You've done a good job with a bad topic.
One other item, I think, Councilmember Diggle, that on that resolution, because there isn't an importance in the timing, if at the end of the reconsideration, that would be, I think that was just the last agenda, so you would be able to call that up for reconsideration. Oh, well, maybe somebody else will.
But I guess my point is, if he's here, and is he going to, when he comes, going to want a decision? When it's a study session, when we can't make a decision? Or does this need to be a regular agenda?
I think you're going to give direction that comes out of that study session, and I think, you know, it's probably an hour, hour and a half discussion, given the agendas that we're looking at in October. I think it's better off in regular, I mean, in study sessions.
No, no, but my point is, at the conclusion of that, if it heads the way we are, is the obvious question going to be, now that you've heard that, what am I supposed to do with Adelphia? And if it's a study session and we can't vote on it, does that matter?
You can say, bring it back, and we want this to be, this to take place, so we will agendize that as a formal action.
Is that okay? I'm at input from the rest of the council. That's fine? Mr. Ridgeway says fine?
Yeah, I think study session's better, just sort of given the level of emotion, because, I mean, rejecting a franchise is not done, like-
Right.
But once in a million.
Big step.
So I don't think you might not want to pull the trigger on that.
Well, who knows? I mean, well, we've got a peculiar situation. Okay, anything else? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Okay, we'll close it. Mr. Kiff, you have anything else to conclude? Anything else from the council? Okay, that's it. City Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject-mattered jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes.
There's your chance. All right, seeing that, we'll close it. We're going to adjourn until 7 o'clock for the regular meeting. There's no close session tonight. 7 o'clock, we'll reconvene. Thank you.